If you all stand. Eric, would you please leave this in there? I've been looking at the clock and it's not going to tell me what I need to know. If you would please.
Good morning. I'd like to share a little jingle with you before we pray. It's way a lot of times I start up my day. Goes like this. I am blessed, I am blessed. Every day that I live, I am blessed. When I wake up in the morning till I lay my head to rest, I am blessed, I am blessed. Let's pray. Father, we are truly blessed to live in Fayette County. Thank you, God, for the life-living breath that you give to us. We thank you for those that serve this county well, the commissioners today, and those citizens that are here representative of events in this county. Thank you, God, for unity in our community. Thank you, God, for prosperity and good health and long life. We give you praise in all things and you sustain. Amen.
Thank you, Eric. Pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its liberty and justice for all.
I call this we need order. I guess I should have done that before we pray. Pledge of allegiance. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll move to proof minutes. Second.
Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, if you're gonna black this out, you use wrong color ink.
I did redact it very good, huh, Mark? Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a short report, and if you'll bear with me, I would like to be excused after I give my report. I have a urgent matter to take care of afterwards, almost at the same time here. For the sake of the viewers, of those that are watching this on Channel 3, just a reminder that the Economic Development Group's main function is to support existing business as we retain business, help businesses expand, and then our entity, constant work of attracting new industry to Connerville, Fayette County. We are very involved in job creation, workforce development with the property that we own, the Ivy Tech location, and we are pleased that that is working and going forward pretty well. We have a tendency to have renters come in and out of the industrial side, and we're doing our best there to attract renters on the industrial side. A noteworthy thing that you'll see there in the yellow that Mark already noticed is that Fayette County is one of the counties that is involved in this Indiana Department of Workforce Development grant. It's $1.28 million grant to the ELEAD Network, and the ELEAD stands for Employer-Led Innovative Training Experience. And Ivy Tech is with the grant, they applied for this grant with the assistance of the Economic Development Corps in all the counties. I believe it's six counties that were involved in this that are contiguous to Fayette. And so that's a good thing. We did reach out to basically all the employers in Fayette County to be a participant in this grant. The application and some of the commitments evidently were such that some of the employer did not want to become involved in it, to worse than in Fayette Regional. Noteworthy, the last time I think I was here and gave your written report, we were at 10 RFIs from the state that we responded to. We've applied to three more since that time. One of the things I'd like to make you aware of is that we are in the process of forming the Intelligent Community Task Force, task force, which is the next phase of the initiative that was brought to us from Purdue. You'll recall the event that we had at the Miller Building back on April. We, since that, his speech and that event, we have made our written application through Purdue, and then that was accepted and approved. Our next phase is to put together this task force of eight to 10 people, which we are about three-quarters of the way through getting the commitment. And then we will partner back up with Purdue after we get those eight to 10 people to go through the goal selection and really start doing the work in earnest that will happen after that. Something that's very late notice to the commissioners, I apologize. I think Brenda did send an email to both the city and county councils, and to the commissioners and board of works, and probably every other mailing list that we've got. And that is for this stellar regional thing that's happening Thursday at 9:30 a.m. and goes until 12:30. There's no RSVP needed. We're trying to get as many people that we can there, specifically the elected officials. You'll see in your little packet that I gave you, there's a map. I believe it's on the last page, or it's in one of the pages that you've got that shows, yeah, it is the last page, that shows the directions to the Coolman Center. I'm certain that most of you have already been there. If you have the opportunity to go to this, we certainly encourage it. I'm taking a, I'm taking the EDG van up and willing to take, I think, Leota, you've already asked, and we're certainly willing to take you. I think some of the city council folks are planning on attending this as well. That is basically my report. I'm not going to reread a lot of these blue things that I've mentioned to you before in private and in public. Does the commissioners have any questions or advice, counsel thoughts, if you want to?
Do you want any question? I have, Dan, the workforce development grant.
Yes.
Application. You said that that's been applied to. What, when is that going to be awarded?
It is awarded. It has been, and the timeframe on that, I believe, is a two-year cycle for this $1.2 million. Other employers can get involved. Just because they didn't apply, and this is some of the questions I've had regarding, it's a good question. Does that mean that Howden and Fayette Tool can't get some of this money? No, doesn't mean that at all. But those that did apply and went through the rigorous process prior to are, they're at the top of the priority list. Those other employers can get involved. They need to make a move. I mean, we've invited them to participate. You can take the water, horse the water, but you can't force it to drink. We've kind of done that.
So the two that have applied, they've been awarded?
They've not received, to my knowledge, they have received no money. It's related to programs that also have to go forward. They'll fund those programs.
Okay.
There are specific training programs that were spelled out in the application. So it's pretty qualified. It's just not like, here's a check. They have to do their part too, and Ivy Tech's highly involved in that.
Okay. So if they do, this program then, we're not going to be responsible for looking after it to make sure it's carried out?
No, no, no. Ivy Tech's basically the grant administrator on this, and they're the ones that are going to be making sure that Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and that they get the money that's been allotted.
Okay.
It's a good program, and I'm glad that we've got some people that are going to get some of that money. It's a pretty big deal, really. $1.28 million bucks is a lot of money just for the six counties that are in this round of grants.
So that's the total dollars just to this area?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not statewide dollars?
Right.
All right, that is, that is a good number.
Pretty big, pretty big.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Hey, guys.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Got all the millings done. Came up with a total of 12,000 tons. I'm gonna try to hit the road with them Monday, because we got rain coming in tomorrow and everything. And that tank that we've just recently got's been tremendous help to us. We go through about 1,000 gallons a day on the toll batteries. So I just want to give you guys a heads up on that. We got two culverts left on 200 Alpha Hill. Wanted to wait till school let up before we dug into that. And I just seen recently, yesterday, I think they got all the culverts marked on Alcuina Road, where milestone's going to replace those before they pave it. And mowing, doing a lot of mowing out there, best we can. We'll get to everybody sooner or later.
Very good.
Thoughts on chips, you?
Start the list on that as well. So we'll get that ball rolling as soon as we get done with the paper.
Okay.
You're laying the millings with the paver, correct?
Yeah. They turned out pretty good. They're smaller than 53 size, so they'll lay out pretty good.
Okay.
That's it, unless you guys got something else. I'll wait after.
Thank you. I'll get to, I'll get you just as soon as I can.
I have Warren's name on here, but I don't see him unless he's hiding on the other side of the.
He's not here.
Okay. Michael King.
Morning.
Morning.
I put my monthly report in your boxes. The email server, or the email spam filter didn't do all the results as far as what was spam and what wasn't, so I had to estimate it. So we had 62,738 emails come in. At the roughly 55 to 60% of what we've got coming in as spam, I put it, our guess is 3,400, or 34,506 blocks, so shows still how much junk comes in. And we've got 146 email addresses currently, so it, you know, it's not hard to have that many bad emails coming in when you have that many people that don't change their email addresses often. We've got some people who have had the same email address for 10 years, like the Assessor and some of these others, that are inherited email where one person gets elected and becomes another person's email. So, phone calls, we had 71,803 according to the MetroNet system. Obviously doesn't count like highway and that kind of thing, but that's 37,852 that said they were answered. I didn't break that down by amount of time on the phone, so that could have been a 30-second answer, or it could have been on the call for half an hour, depending on what it was. I didn't break it down near, more than that. Got some of the things that are in progress there. One thing I think we're going to struggle with is the age of our computers. Most of them are going around four years to five years old currently. Rushville, what he does, he replaces all, his computers are on a five-year rotation, so in the course of five years, he doesn't have anything older. We just don't have the budget for that. My budget for computers is $24,000, and that's for everything that I need to get, whether it's software, or monitors, or printers, or whatever. Even if I manage to only use that for computers, and I somehow get computers for 500 bucks a piece, you're still only talking 48 computers, and we've got quite a few more computers than that. Now, obviously, we don't have to replace them all in one year, but I'm just showing you that that 24,000 doesn't go very far when you're talking computers, monitors, everything else. So it's one of the things just to be aware of. We're replacing parts and keeping things running as best we can, but we will probably, for next year's budget cycle, I'm going to argue for more so that I can try to get into a process of at least replacing X number of computers per year. So we at least don't have anything older than like seven years, for sure.
Can you, do you have a, I'm sure you have an inventory number of total computers, and how many, how many dollars are we talking about to stay on a five-year cycle per year?
I think if I up my requested budget to about 36,000 or 40,000, and set at least 12,000 of that aside for that purpose, I think it'll be okay, but I have to get quotes to really see how far it goes.
So really, if we were talking about just a line item to replace computers?
If I, I'd have to get quotes, but if I replace just for age, if I replace 25 computers a year, it really, we really shouldn't get too far behind. We should still be in that five-to-six-year cycle. But we had to replace two hard drives last week in auditor computers, Jane's and Terry Cabin's, because the hard drives failed.
And is that due to?
Just due to age.
They're too old, they're older than the five years?
I don't know that they're older than the five years, it's just they're.
They grew them too hard, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's just a moving, it's just a fast-moving part. I mean, they spin at 7,200 RPM. It's like with your car, you know? Something that spins that fast, that long, gets a little bit of wobble into it, and now it doesn't want to work right.
Well, and Michael, I guess my theory, you know, I've always been on the impression, just like the highway garage, I think we ought to replace a dump truck a year regardless, because that makes.
Yeah, that's why Randy does it in Rushville.
Truck 10 or 12 years old when it's retired. Computers are the same way. We need to establish a plan.
Yeah.
And say, we're going to do the five-year rotation, we're going to do a six-year rotation, whatever it is.
Yeah, and unfortunately, some computers, you can go 10 years, I mean, and they'll work fine. They may be slow, but they work. Other computers, it seems like three years. So I'm going to see, and I'm also going to break down too, and see if I can figure out some models, because in some cases, like the public terminals in the hallway upstairs, we can get away with a $300 computer. So I'm not trying to say that the public doesn't need to be able to get the information by any means, but they don't need to have the fastest computer that's a $700 computer sitting there.
You could have the second generation.
Yeah, or a all-in-one computer that has a monitor, like I got for the elections. We got those, they were $350 a piece, and that included the monitor and everything. And that was a simple little machine. They aren't fast, but they worked for the purpose. And in some cases, those may work, whereas we don't need to have a larger $600 machine. You know, so I'm going to, I've got to break that down. And those might also work too for places like the public terminal, because like I said, that includes the monitor, keyboard, and mouse, and whereas a monitor's another $100. You know, we're keeping monitors the same way, let them go as long as we can, so.
Well, you'll have my support in backing on creating a capital investment plan.
Yeah, and unfortunately, with the way computer prices are, they just keep going up. I mean, what I could spend last year for 500, and you can get a good, stable machine, is now 600, 650, just from the price of the way the computer prices go up, so. The other thing I need to get approved is the printer that I've got in quotes there for you. The best price that I could find was from Amazon. Between the printer itself and the envelope feeder, came out as $981.99 with no shipping. You can see the other prices that I got there. The two vendors that I actually have invoices with came in at over $1,300, so Amazon stomped all over it. And the printer that we're replacing that for, that's in the clerk's office, what they use for their ticket jackets, that printer's been used, I think. It's been used the entire time I've been here, and Barb Throop says she's been using the same printer the entire time she's been here, so it's gotten a good 10 years out of it, so. And that's coming out of my budget, so I've got money set aside for that, so I just need to get approval.
I'd make a motion to approve the request for the printer from Amazon.
I've got a question on that.
Uh-huh.
Amazon's got this thing about not sending stuff back. Is that going to have an effect on this?
Not sending stuff back? I haven't seen anything about that.
Yeah, well, they're denying you to be able to send something back if it ain't right.
Haven't seen anything about it. They still have the 30, their 30-day coverage, or the, I think, no something guarantee, no frills guarantee thing they've got on there.
I'll second that.
It's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Okay. It is a new product, it's not used, so we would also still have the HP warranties from the items that come standard, so. And then another thing that needs to be renewed is our Barracuda coverage. I didn't include the quote there with your packet because it was crazy. They raised their price again, for one thing. It went from, I think it was $8 or $9 last year, now it's $10 per lot email, and we've also raised the number of emails. Last year, we only covered 100, and then we supplemented it with some more. Now we're up to 150. So it went from $800 to $1,000, now it's $1,500. However, our email host, Reliable Networks, or now their name is Otelco, they have their own Barracuda service. It's supposed to be just as good. It's $50 a month, so it would raise our email bill by $50 per month. So $600 per year, which works out at 150 emails to $4 per month, or $4 per email instead of 10. So if you give me approval on that, I will just tell them to go ahead and do that. On the user end, for you guys, for the email, shouldn't be any different. I'll still have the same amount of control to allow an email through that's been marked as spam. We'll have the same amount of control as far as exceptions and all that stuff, so as far as on the other end, there won't be any difference. It'll just save us basically 900 bucks.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved in second, to approve. Changing whatever it was. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
And the final thing, I still have two weeks of vacation to use before next month, before July 18th.
You need to use it.
Yeah, so that's why I put on there that from June 14th to June 20th, I'm going to use vacation. I'd like to hear your guys' approval for Mike to cover the city, basically law enforcement, emergency services departments while I'm gone. I will only be in Rushville, so if something major does come up, I can come back over, since I don't have any money to go anywhere, but it'll at least get me out of here for a week, so. Speaking of, anything else you need from me? Any questions or anything?
Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Happy birthday tomorrow.
Thanks. I'm sure I'll be here again.
Only thing I have is a community crossings project on Alcuina Road. The contractors marked culvert structures, six of them, were probably called before you dig, and they said they'll have their pipe order in this week, but I'm not sure when they'll start replacing the culverts on Alcuina Road. We will probably close them, maybe two at a time, whichever's convenient for them. Alcuina Road will be closed a couple days each time. First one of them there east of Alcuina might be more convenient at most. I guess Jim probably have a report on Bridge 25. You have anything?
No. Okay.
He's been emailing us.
Yeah, got pictures, a lot of pictures.
Turnside, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian Ellis.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I received notice about our AEDs that it is time to replace the pads, the adult and infant pads. The cost for those, for the three that we have is $383, and then whatever shipping would be on top of that. So I would need a source and approval to do that.
We were going to take batteries out of the commissioners' budget, Jane, last year, and we ended up not having to replace the batteries. There's a thousand dollars or something for repairs or something in that budget, in that, you know, budget?
Okay.
If you don't mind. I think it's maintenance or repairs or something. It's not very much that we keep in there, but it's nice to use for maintenance, to fix it later.
Give me a second, it's a long one.
That's fine. If I remember right, Adrian, the batteries checked okay last year, didn't they?
Yes, sir.
We thought we were going to have to replace them.
I thought they were one year, but they reassured me they were five years.
Yeah.
I don't like the pressure.
Yeah, we're all looking.
I know. I can do that. I could count down, clock it out, yeah, thank you. Repair of equipment. There he is. Still a thousand dollars in that line item. I'm going to get out of this hatch.
The other things, I sent you a copy of my annual evaluation from Homeland Security. Passed well. That means, Leota, you'll get one of those odd grant agreements, and that's $18,000 coming to the county for that. I did receive an email, I'm not quite sure what this is about, is from FEMA, they're going to be holding a regional meeting that I need to attend. It's going to be about how they fund flooding. Now, there's certain things they won't do anymore. I think there's been such a realignment in Washington since the election that departments are cut, they're scrambling to utilize funds the best that they can, and the end result is it puts pressure on us to adjust. So I don't know, they have not established a date. They sent me, FEMA sent an email, so I will have to respond to that when they do get a date. And in addition to that, NIMS is back on the hotline. Gary, you know I've harped on that quite a bit. I will be in a meeting in Brownsville Monday. I was chosen for some reason, I don't know, but it's about NIMS, and the other thing I do know is they're going to start looking at capabilities of each one. I will be doing for all the emergency services, written, not registration, but acknowledgement of the department's training levels of NIMS. There's certain levels that all have to have. That will be going out, and in addition, what is called NIMS-type sourcing.
It's going to be about how they fund flooding. Now, there's certain things they won't do anymore. I think there's been such a realignment in Washington since the election that departments are cut, they're scrambling to utilize funds the best that they can, and the end result is it puts pressure on us to adjust. So I don't know, they have not established a date. They sent me, FEMA sent an email, so I will have to respond to that when they do get a date. And in addition to that, NIMS is back on the hotline. Gary, you know I've harped on that quite a bit. I will be in a meeting in Brownsville Monday. I was chosen for some reason, I don't know, but it's about NIMS, and the other thing I do know is they're going to start looking at capabilities of each one. I will be doing, for all the emergency services, written, not registration, but acknowledgement of the department's training levels of NIMS. There's certain levels that all have to have. That will be going out, and in addition, what is called NIMS-type sourcing. There are five types of response activities, five to one. Five being the everyday incident, car wreck, fire, something of that nature, and then you go to Level One, which is a holy nightmare. That is, what they're doing is basically saying, okay, everybody on emergency services, over the years, you've received money for grant activities to buy vehicles, to buy equipment. What they're saying is, we're now a big community, and if we have a major event here, we wanna knock on your door to use that, and that type resourcing is doing that. The other reason I'm getting this is because I'm a member of Homeland Security's task force. So what they've also done is establish a direct line with the National Guard. It used to be that the process would go through the commissioners, if it were bad enough to request them, then I would contact Homeland Security, they would go through the Guard, now it's a direct relationship. I've been in conversation with Sergeant Tuley, the Guard, and Sergeant Lindvile, so we now have that one-to-one relationship. I have an idea that, let me look, the NIMS resourcing, this is just one, but that'll pour you the tears. And there is the workshop for FEMA. That basically is what is going on, I'll be able to report better, but getting back to harping on NIMS is critical, solves a lot of problems, and I've gotta stay on top of it. That primarily is my job to do that, so, good, bad, or indifferent, I'm gonna be beating on emergency services doors, and it's critical for them to do that. Bottom line, if we have a disaster, and they're not ready, and they don't speak the language, it would be like going to France and somebody asks you, do you know how to get out of here? Well, if you don't speak the language, and don't know how to say the Jana Sepa, I don't know, then you're in trouble. And basically, that's what NIMS is, it's a language procedure, and it solves a lot of problems. So that will be going on, so if people get upset about that, I don't know what to tell them. Their grants are gonna become more dependent on their recording, or reporting capabilities. That, and the, as I said, the quarterly report that I submitted on everything going on. That is basically it. You have any questions?
I have lots of questions, but I think we have time to answer them today.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Couple things, I just wanted to address the body on the issues of drug courts going well. We had our certification audit at ten AM last Tuesday, so almost exactly a week ago, preliminary meeting. I think that went well, got a few things I need to get into them yet for review. We're still shooting in the next sixty days to have live candidates in the program. The only issue, yesterday I got an email from the fellow, Mr. Miller, from State Court Administration, who met with us last week, and he was just notifying all the grant recipients that he resigned. So the guy that would be reviewing the documents that I'm feverishly working on putting together just resigned. So I'm not sure what kind of administrative tumult that will create, upstate, that will create a delay, or, I don't know. I'm hoping not. But anyway, that happened. Then, also yesterday, my court reporter resigned, so I'll have a request in, replace her, so I'm forty-one months as judge now. This is my fourth resignation from staff in forty-one months, so I'm not gonna belabor this, you already heard this spiel before, I give it every time this happens, you know the problems we have here. Continuity is extremely important. They leave because of the money. That's what it is, they leave because of the money. It's not good. No other courts around do this, not even close to our turnover. So, I know it's money, you don't have it, but it's a problem, it's a serious problem. Then, good news is, I think we have, we don't have the official letter yet, but I think we're off heightened status on State Public Defenders Commission. I think we resolved that with your good work. Last time, I did get an email also yesterday, big day yesterday, big day, from them regarding the twenty thousand dollars that I got in the drug court grant for a special PD just for drug court, if you recall that level of detail. And there was an issue about whether or not, since a hundred percent of that money was grant money, could we then turn that expenditure back in? We'll put that money in an account, and then we'll pay the contract. Could we then turn that twenty thousand in on our reimbursement claim? It almost seems like cheating, obviously, right? We get money from the state, we put it in an account, we spend it, then we turn in that we spent it and ask them for another. Ask them for a percentage of that back on the money that they just gave us. But I'm not a hundred percent sure they're not gonna do it. This is state government, after all, okay? So they're considering it. So we might even make, we might even make, basically make eight thousand dollars out of the deal or something. That'd be fantastic, it's totally ridiculous, but if they do it, God bless their heart.
That'll be all right.
So that's where we're at on that. I don't know if anybody had any questions about, I know there's been a lot of these crisis issues with the grants, and I do have an appointment along with the Community Corrections Director with Ms. Wright on Monday to set up all these drug court accounts, since this is new. So we're gonna get that done, we're already on that. Of course, Diana's fantastic, I'm fully confident, that'll be no issue. Any of these various issues, anybody have any comment or questions on? I know it wasn't really on the agenda, but there's quite a lot of stuff going on I thought I should show up to address.
I appreciate it. The half is going for the council tonight, and for the additional?
Yes.
So hopefully, we'll get that through next week, and we'll be able to get that online.
Right. The contracts were signed because we had enough money in the fund, all ready to honor them, it's just that we'd run out at the end if we didn't approve the extra twenty-five, but I've been assured by them that that's no problem. Well, it's a problem, but they're gonna do it.
It's a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
Nothing, all right, thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Yeah, absolutely.
Colin, did you have anything?
Today. You're still gonna deserve this. You're still gonna deserve this. Yeah, got a month on.
And we have mail about the library board. It was from Sarah Powell, who's Secretary of Library Board, and asked us to replace Mike Stevens, who has resigned. And I want to recommend Vane Lashua, who's a former Connersville resident, who's returned from wherever he was living, and he's willing to serve. So we have another mail on the board.
What's his name?
Vane Lashua.
Do you have any others? I'd make a motion that we approve, appoint the Vane Lashua to serve out the term of...
Mike Stevens?
Mr. Stevens. I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
There is, I guess, Jane, I should ask, there is a term to finish out, correct?
I believe their terms expire on June thirtieth, so you're appointing him to take the new term that starts July first.
Okay, all right, all right. Then, I reword my motion then, to that, fit that. I was under the impression he was resigning now.
All right. Is there any old business?
The community crossing will be opening up soon, and we are just getting prepared to move forward with that. We need to update our Pacer report. I put out a request to get, from three organizations, to get quotes to do that, from USI Consultants, their quote was thirty-eight thousand five hundred, DLZ was thirty-nine thousand five eighty-five, and Butler Fairman was twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars. So I recommend that we move forward with Butler Fairman on that.
Where will we be paying for this, Frank? It's not part of the grant?
No, but it is, we can't apply for the grant money without this.
Right. So...
It has to come out of the Highway Department, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
They don't have funds, we'd have to do it on contractual services.
Jane, do you know right off the top of your head where it was taken from two...
I don't.
Two years ago?
Yes, it has to be updated every two years.
Butler Fairman's who we had last time.
Correct.
So they already have some knowledge of our roads.
I need to pass the last off.
Go talk to Michael.
Oh, yeah. Can we put that into my sixteen, that's about twenty-eight thousand, right?
Yes, it's about the same amount.
It came out of the Highway's budget, three thousand twelve gallons. Other contractual services from the Highway Department budget.
Okay.
Is there money already there, or will they need to transfer?
That's another question on a different page.
On a different page, isn't it?
There is no money in that bottom line.
Are they able to, is there...
There might be somewhere that we could transfer out, look at those accounts.
Without going to the council, or...
Possibly.
Okay.
If there's anything else within the three thousand series?
Yeah.
Transfer without counsel. So you and I need to talk.
I thought we got additional.
We might have.
I think that's the route we went with that.
When you did it last time? My concern would be the timeliness. I think we'd have to do, we need to do a transfer to get this done. Because we're talking, if we do an additional, we're talking, at least thirty days, aren't we, Jane?
Yes, because it would have to be advertised for the July meeting.
And we don't have that timeframe, do we?
I believe, probably, by the time all the work gets done, and, you know, and then they normally give us thirty days to pay once everything's complete, so.
Yeah, my problem is, when you sign a contract, you obligate the council. Colin, could we approve this pending funding?
I think so, sure.
And not illegally obligate the council?
No, I think you guys can give me the go-ahead, pending council's approval.
I'd make a motion that we approve the agreement with Butler Fairman and Seifer for twenty-eight thousand one hundred, and also ask the council for additional appropriation under contractual services for the Highway Department. Pending that approval from the council, that we allow this contract to be carried out.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to approve Butler Fairman, pending approval from the council for the funding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And also, to move forward, excuse me, I'd like one of the commissioners to be appointed to a committee with Warren Soodoff, Richard, and myself to move forward with the Pacer application and all that goes into that. I mean, I'm sorry, community crossing application, and all that goes into that.
Last year, we just met once, didn't we?
I think we sat and we hammered it out.
The weather snowed, was it? Meeting?
Preferably this afternoon.
Is that where you wanna go?
I'll do, you let me know when meeting is.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That works for me.
To pick up community crossings, thanks.
You gotta tell me what to wear to, you know.
We also, we're receiving notification that there's a possibility to sign for a program that the state has started called Trex, T-R-E-C-S, and its tax refund, or we can, somebody's getting a tax refund, we can claim that to pay their taxes, and they owe us property taxes, and they owe the county any money in any way, and we have an application that I'd like to recommend that we accept. Do I have your motion, or...
I think it's from the legislature, maybe, the county, so it's...
What, correct me if I'm wrong, Leota, what it is, is if someone qualifies for a state income tax refund?
Yes.
And they owe local taxes, property taxes, or other?
Yeah, we can attach that.
We can garnish that. Refund to cover their property taxes. Is this a, Jane, does this work year to year, or is this something that you have to do...
I think as we sign the agreement, that will be in effect until we would cancel the agreement, but yes, we have to each year send them the information on who is dealing what on their taxes, and then they do a match with the state on who's getting refunds, and then at that point, we would notify the person that you owe these much money in back taxes, we're gonna intercept your state tax refund to pay those, and they said most people will go ahead and come in and pay, rather than allow you to intercept. Most people don't like that you mess with their tax refunds, so when they get that notice, it's kind of a prompt.
How much more...
There's no cost.
Work in your office?
It's just an upload, it would actually come through the treasure department, not from our office, but it's a file upload that they would have to do, like, once a week, or once, kind of however often they wanna get that information out there. The more often they would upload information, the more likely they would get matches on the refunds.
And basically, it's an online...
Yes.
Upload.
It's like an Excel file.
No, it's...
It's okay. I'd make a motion that we... I'd make a motion that we sign this agreement and use this as for property tax reimbursement.
Second your motion.
Ben Moon, in second, to sign the DRCS agreement. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Make a motion for approval of claims and payroll.
I want to approve the claims and payroll, second.
Ben Moon, in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. And we will adjourn once we have signed all these pieces of paper.
Jane, do you know, is Bill right here this week?
I saw him several times yesterday.
Okay.
I think this has really got a lot going on.
Has he said I said, Ben, he only has the one bid to the roof. Did he need to address that?
I think he was working on trying to get a couple more. I gave him another roofing couple.
Is that for probation?
I'm sorry?
Is that for best?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Are you guys adjourned?
Not until we sign papers.
Can I ask you questions? Is it appropriate, or should we wait?
Do you have a question for us?
Yeah, I have two openings, and I have two people, but I know I'm on the agenda, and I can't be on the next agenda, so I didn't know if I could send out an email or just to get those people approved, if they can start earlier than the two weeks, that may not be able to anymore. Just have to have one of them that to be as far as actually, we agree that 144 is approved.
You have 144 to be approved?
I think they've both been approved. I need to get with Jane. I know one was pre-approved, but I actually have the actual people that I would like to hire. Whatever you want to do. I can get on the next agenda if you want. We're sending you now.
I'm not sure what you're asking, Josh.
I have two openings.
She wants to hire, she's got the names.
She's got the names in the 144.
It's been, like, over a month, so we've set everything up, but I was trying to find some people, and I do have two people I would like to see if it would be okay to offer them a position.
Would you like to do?
Yeah, if you want.
Well, plus the autograph, any, go ahead.
Okay.
I'll get this taken care of. I take that you have current vacancies and they need fill. You've got too much work to do for us to leave you shorthanded, Jane.
Yeah, and that's why I should just, just to see if it was a possibility of that being on the agenda. I apologize for that.
We'll forgive you today, just don't let that happen again.
Okay. Duly noted. I have the position for the juvenile receptionist available, and I would like to offer the position to Vicki Mackey, who's actually, many years ago, was a county employee. She started at probation and was with the Circuit Court for, it's probably been about 20 years. She's been the assistant to the Fayette County School Corporation Curriculum Director, and the school system is downsizing and is eliminating that position. So, that just came up with her, and I would like, she's got some past experience, and I think she'd be fine as a receptionist.
You want to grab her before you lose her?
Huh?
And you want to grab her before she runs away by herself?
Exactly. Exactly. And I think she's taking a cut. Like, she, I tell them the salary right off the bat to get that out of the way, that it would be at the starting salary for a receptionist.
And she understands that she'll be starting?
Yeah. Starting at, yeah, with vacation days and all that stuff, she's starting up, yeah.
Jane, your other one?
The other one was for the administrative assistant. We did have approval, and Tucker Raley had, and I'm not surprised, a Purdue graduate that was approved. She's already found another position, and her last day was Thursday. And I have Linda Auerbach, who's originally from Connersville, and she moved to Virginia, has tons of experience, has written grants for volunteer fire department, actually had worked with FBI's Administrative Assistant in the 80s, and she has a lot of background experience for administrative assistant and doing payroll, which are the main responsibilities for this grant. And she's returned to live in Connersville, so she was very qualified also for the position and understands that it's a grant-written position.
John, did you say that the Purdue graduate that just started has left already?
Yes, she got another position.
Why are we not considering, we remind them on the backside that it's a grant, and if it runs out, there's no position. Why don't we consider locking them in to the life of that grant for employment?
Okay.
Some type of a, and Colin, maybe you can chime in, but some type of an employment contract that obligates them to stay?
Yeah, but I don't know how unfortunate something that would be.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
I can look into it.
Yeah, and that's been the concern, too, when we got the grant, was making sure they understood that it was a condition of getting the grant, that they would keep the position.
And we've done very well trying to...
It does make people nervous. Honestly, I wasn't surprised. I knew she was a Purdue graduate. We had talked about it. She still, the money was there with the grant, and she still helped do basic duties with payroll, submitting claims and things like that. And that, I believe this position, that she has more reasons that she's going to be staying, knowing you have a young Purdue graduate, I guess I'm not surprised. This candidate indicates that she's, you know, coming, moving back to Connersville, which is her hometown, and wants the stability and actually less hours from where she's working now, so...
I mean, somehow we've, these people know the salaries when they start, and somehow we have to have some guarantee of continuity.
Yeah, I can look into it.
I would love to. We haven't, I mean, we've gone 20 years without hiring, and then boom, all of a sudden, it's just kind of been musical chairs for the past, I don't know, three to four months. It's just been really difficult. And it's, as the judge has said, too, they're wooed away from, you know, they're offered more money in other places, so it's really difficult. Like, I can't berate them for that when they're trying to get a better pay somewhere, so I understand that, but I agree with you. It would be nice to...
Well, I mean, I understand we're living in a society of non-commitment.
Right.
But still, it don't work. It doesn't, it doesn't work for business. I mean, somehow, we've got to figure out, and I understand the pay's not maybe the greatest in the world, but it's awful good hours.
Right. Oh, there are benefits to it, too, yeah.
And there are awful good benefits that go along with it, and it seems like we should be asking for some commitment from those potential employees.
Yeah.
And be guaranteed some type of a commitment. So, I, with that, I don't think we can do anything with these two as far as that, letting Colin look into to us for the future, but I would approve those two requests as made, or I would make a motion.
Okay.
Second, if you approve.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye. Three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That's it.
That's it? I'll second your motion.
You moved to adjourn? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.